I've got six, but we're waiting on Joe. Uh, Patrick, um, is unable to join us tonight. He texted me, uh, about forty-five minutes ago. He's unable to come. Uh, but I'm wait- not waiting on Joe. Don't want to get started without him. Kristen.
I'm here, sir, but just by phone for now.
Oh, I don't even see a phone on my screen that it's logged in. Okay, all right, Joe. Good. Glad you're there. Are you coming? Are you gonna come in video later? You're going phone all the way?
I'm, I may be driving. I'm about to leave work and so I'll do the best I can, sir.
Okay, you're driving. Okay. Well then, be silent, Mr. Vera Cruz.
Yes, sir.
Or maybe we can send a police officer to give you a ticket or something. I don't know. Okay, uh, Mr. Heger is here and that'll make six out of seven of us. So I believe that we're ready to go ahead and get started. So I will call our uh, special meeting together. Having trouble reading this tonight. Need to do this. Uh, the timestamp is six oh two. And in accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March sixteenth, twenty twenty is extended by Office of the Governor on June twelfth. The City Council of the City of Duncanville will conduct city council regular meetings by video conference at six P M. Uh, effective May nineteenth to twenty twenty to advance public health goal living face-to-face meetings also called social distancing in an effort to slow the spread of coronavirus. Uh, this is an open meeting conducted by video conference and there is no public access to our physical location. And the submittal of public comments needed to be done by, uh, four o'clock. And city secretary, I did not see anything in my inbox. Is that true that we do not have any comments?
No, sir, you have some. Um, let me resend them to you.
Oh, I see it. Wait a minute. I see it. I see it.
Okay.
No, I don't. All it is, it says that you she sent it. So I do not see it in my inbox that she sent it to me.
Okay, let me, let me send it. Should have received it now.
Okay, I have it. Just that one though, from Chambers. Is that it?
No, Mayor, on the attachment, I think it's like five or six, uh, comments. If you'd like, I could read them.
Oh, I see. I just opened one P D. I see them all. I see them all. Okay, okay. All right, I see them. Okay. All right. Okay, uh, recording of the video meeting made available to the public in accordance with the Opens Meeting Act upon written request. So item number two on our agenda is receive public comments. And I do have those and I will read them in the order that I had received them, uh, on this P V F. Uh, first one I have is from Rue Net Chambers. And, uh, Chamber says, hi, please help us keep Hollywood Park a nice, safe community. The second comment that I have is from a Bobby Roddy. And he says, in support of our code enforcement, they do a great job, though sometimes shorthanded. I've lived in Hollywood Park for over thirty-one years and have only compliments for this group. Professional, courteous, and responsive. Keep up the good work. The next comment I have is from Margarita Brooks. Just a quick note to say thanks to code enforcement for helping to keep our neighborhood looking good. I hope that the code enforcers continue to care about Hollywood Park because the I do. Uh, that's quote unquote. The next one I have is from Nettie or Net Marshall. I believe it's probably Nettie. Oh, this is Runet again. That's the second one. Excuse me. She says, hi, thanks. Some of us would like our neighborhood kept up to code like the green and the gated neighborhoods of Duncanville. There are still loose dogs, high grass, cars parked on wrong side of the street, et cetera. Respectfully, Runet. And the next one is from Dr. Pamela Grayson. She provides her address nine zero five Fairbank Circle, Duncanville, seven five one three seven. My comment, this is quoting what she has here. My comments are regarding significant issues in the neighborhood in which I reside in District Four. Paragraph one, A. On Friday, June nineteenth, after it had rained, I got up and cut the grass in my yard. I then left later and saw a note on my garage door, read the very grass I had cut. On the evening of Monday, June twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, I cut the grass in my yard. The next Tuesday, there was no need to cut it. And Wednesday, I was out of town all day for my son's birthday. That Thursday, I received a violation from code enforcement, Ree. My yard on the Monday that I had cut it again, and on the same Thursday, I watched code enforcement sitting in her truck outside in my front yard again for about two minutes. This was at about one fifty P M. In the afternoon. Now comma, realize that since that Monday, I had not had a chance to even cut the yard. It rained on that very Thursday and my yard was cut the following Saturday. But I am waiting for more foolishness from Esther Wright and her crew. Paragraph one B. My neighbor across the street, Mrs. Latricia Williams, needed to dispose of a large bed headboard. She set the headboard out for the Friday large trash pickup that normally occurs. The headboard sat there for about a week or so, and Mrs. Williams then called Public Works to find out why they were not picking it up. They then informed her that the large trash pickup was temporarily halted due to COVID nineteen and then issued her a violation for the headboard being out on the sidewalk after she called to ask why it wasn't picked up. They then demanded that she take the headboard all the way to Ennis, Texas to be disposed. They held her responsible and penalized her for information that had not been provided to her. Paragraph one C. I have another neighbor that also complained of code enforcement issuing warnings and violations after it rains, but there was time to mow. But before, I'm sorry, but before there was time to mow. Paragraph one D. Apparently, the neighborhood is aware that there is a Caucasian lady that comes through early in the mornings around eight or nine, taking pictures and issuing citations after it rained, which is rather disingenuous of code enforcement. And some of these neighbors will probably have a few words for this young lady next time. Paragraph two, speeding on Barrymore. Paragraph two A. Multiple residents constantly complain of people speeding down Barrymore. My son plays with families on that street and I have seen it myself. These cars fly through and there are children playing in the street. Please put speed bumps down or set a speed trap to protect our children. One of the families purposely parks the car in the first curve on Barrymore to force speeders to slow down in the curve. Paragraph three. Tagging in the neighborhood. Paragraph three A. This past Saturday, I received a text with about three pictures of where quote-unquote black power and quote-unquote black devils have been tagged in various places within the neighborhood. There are actually a total of five tags. One place is on my next door neighbor's fence which faces Barrymore. The other was on the trailer of a semi truck owned by a black man in the neighborhood. Another is on the electrical box on Avenue of the Stars. And another is on the wall near going towards the strip of businesses across from Luby's and the final tag is on the side of the business in that strip of businesses. Now, comma, before we even go there, comma. Let me explain to you that the black community is programmatic thrust as Black Lives Matter. We rarely say black power and definitely do not call ourselves black devils. My neighbor's fence and the trailer were done this past Saturday, but two and between two and four P M. And most likely it would have been done by someone most by someone most would not consider a threat. As it was done in broad daylight. Instead of Esther and her crew harassing us about grass, comma, can they please go clean this work up? With law enforcement to catch the culprit. I have pictures if needed. Paragraph. To summarize, code enforcement needs to leave the community alone, stop issuing disingenuous tickets after this rain and clean up the mess that really is an issue. Please do something about people speeding as one family's pet has already been hurt. Let me be clear. I will be disseminating a copy of these concerns to all in the communities that want them to know that I made their concerns known. And the city will not be able to say it wasn't aware. I will also be going to the other three districts to see if code enforcement is behaving as badly with them. If this district is being treated differently, then we will have some questions. Thank you for sharing these concerns, period. It is my expectation that these concerns will be read into the minutes verbatim and immediate action will ensue. Regards, Dr. Pamela Grayson. And as I see, that is the end of public comments. And for the record, these comments have been read into the record and city staff, it will be made aware of them. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three on our agenda. To deliberate and determine a process plan for the city manager position with executive search from firm S G R. Liberation of such process plan will include the following general topics. Scope of services, point of contact, timeline of events, brochure, and achievements. Uh, one thing I, I do want to say before we get started, um, we do have okay, this alert going off. Thank you. Okay, we do have, uh, Ms. Margie Rhodes, who is our sole point of contact and the senior vice president for S G R. As a representative doing this executive search for our city managers. I do want to, uh, let counsel know and just put this thought that everything that we do in this process is public, uh, which is appreciated. And by the same token, it is highly likely that any candidates that surface for our city manager's job will be watching our city council meetings to see, you know, who we are, what we are, take a look at our faces and how we, how we respond and, and carry out our meetings. So we are very proud of our city council. I am very proud of our city council and the manner in which we conduct our meetings, the way we can get our business accomplished. Uh, so with that said, uh, we need to, to move into an understanding now. First of all, uh, there are certain things that Margie has sent to us that I have understood that she needs some affirmations from. So what I have asked Margie to do is to bring everything to us tonight for the present and the future that she needs some city council affirmation on in order to be able to continue the process without interruption. So that's what we're depending on tonight. So, uh, Ms. Rose, Margie, uh, going to turn it over to you and ask you to guide us through these issues that you have for us. Now, city council, I hope that you have their proposal handy because Exhibit A, uh, is part of what Margie's gonna be talking about and some of the attachments that were sent out earlier also need to be at hand. So with that, uh, Margie, turning it over to you. You're muted, Margie.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so we'll begin with the scope of services. Uh, hopefully you had an opportunity to review the information that was submitted to you in that regard. Let me briefly explain to you why this is before you. Um, the agreement that we entered into, meaning S G R entered into with the city has the standard agreement, but it also has an attachment A, which is scope of services. And your scope of services talks about the city's expectations. Um, when, uh, we reviewed the, uh, the scope of services, there's one area we feel we need to make sure that we're all on the same page of understanding in that regard. So under your Exhibit A scope of services, you should have received a document that is highlighted in blue. It's really the city's expectations. Item B, um, subsection two, and item B is sourcing. And what it basically says is implement a screening process that narrows the field of whose background, experience, and education best meets the needs of the city of Duncanville. The last sentence is the most important part. It says the extent of screening to be conducted will be determined by the city. Um, so that's the, that's the concern we have. But you also received another document that's highlighted in yellow. That document is the part of the request for proposal response that, um, S G R provided the city, um, for this particular area. So what we're basically saying is S G R believes that we have provided um, a process for screening that you're, you're talking about. But because it's the city's expectation that you will determine this, uh, we can't make that decision. We have to look to you and hope that you agree with our assessment that we have addressed the screening process, uh, in the, in the section of, um, that's highlighted in yellow. You show it as step three, initial screening and review, and it talks about it in, in, in a little detail. So what S G R is recommending is that since you have read this, hopefully you would agree, uh, and support, uh, S G R in believing that our screening process um, um, that was submitted, uh, as part of the response is sufficient, um, for your scope of services, uh, as it relates to your expectations.
And Margie, um, just to clarify and well, not clarify, but elaborate on where we're going with this particular aspect of the proposal. This is the, the tiering process, as I call it, as you explained it to me, tiers A, B, and C, or tier one, two, and three.
And, and i- if I could just say, Mayor, before you go too, too much further, a lot of that information, um, is proprietary. So therefore I cannot talk about it in that frame in this discussion other than what is shared under the highlighted section. I would like to term it, uh, high probability, medium probability, as well as low probability.
Excuse me, can you tell me, uh, what date we received this on? And I remember reading it, but I can't find it.
I, I can't either. I don't, I don't, I don't, I can't find it anywhere in my documents, but I'm sure it's here.
I just sent it through. Chacy, uh, Chelsea sent it out last Thursday, I believe.
Last second. It was sent out by Chelsea Cooper.
Yeah, but I just forwarded it over to y'all.
Would you like for me to go over it again?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so hopefully, uh, as you're looking at it, you should have a document that's highlighted in blue. It should say Exhibit A, scope of services, and, uh, near the bottom, it's highlighted in blue. Can everybody identify with that?
That's this, that's this one right here.
That is correct.
So it's this document, this is Exhibit A, and it's already, it's in our proposal. But you just highlighted that particular portion of it in blue, correct?
That is correct.
Been provided to us in the proposal. So folks, if you have the entire S G R proposal, go to, uh, Exhibit A, scope of services, and you'll see that. That's what that one is.
And then, um, the, the, the part that's highlighted in yellow, that is S G R's response to the proposal. So it should be in, um, a document, the response that S G R submitted to the city. And it basically, in our estimation, addresses to concern that's highlighted in blue. And if I could talk just a little bit, I know that the mayor, uh, started talking about it. I want to kind of keep this as generic as possible because a lot of the information is proprietary for S G R. Uh, and if it gets any more detailed than what's highlighted in yellow, it will require I would request that we go into executive session. But let me just talk about the step three that's highlighted, uh, in yellow.
Uh, Margie, does everybody have it now? If you, if you found Chelsea's email, it's one of the attachments. Okay, Monty's got it. Has everybody else got it?
Have it, but, uh, this is Mark. I have it. As I look at this and I'm listening, listening to what Ms. Margie is saying in reference to some we were unable to discuss unless we're in executive session. So I'm questioning why we just don't go into executive session and go through all this completely. First, just having to miss, uh, some points to go around. And then for the general public, perhaps, give them the highlighted parts that, that is public. Then for us to go into Joe's session and finish this up.
Okay, I can talk about it generically. And then, um, from there, if you want to proceed in executive session, that's fine.
Give us as much as you can, Margie.
Okay, uh, so basically, um, under the highlighted yellow section, what we're basically saying is that we will be able to manage the applications as they are resumes, as they come through our process. Um, and as part of the evaluation, S G R uses a triage process of that identifies a lot of the, all of the resumes by high probability, medium probability, and low probability candidates. Um, and the trial, the triage process is the one that, uh, is a little more in-depth and it's proprietary. That's why I cannot talk about that openly. Um, but I will say that the process that we do have is very in-depth. Um, and we get very engaged and understanding the applicants, their application, um, their work experience and all of those different things. Um, and, and what it basically, with, without going into a lot of detail, when I meet with you after the, uh, the, in a, after the, uh, the search has been up for thirty days and I come and meet with you, I would then be able to share with you a lot of information in executive session, however, though, about all of the different candidates. That's a very generic view. Um, but our screening process ties to, uh, our triage process.
Anything else on those highlighted yellow portions, Margie?
No, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, now, in some communication that you and I had by email, you asked for some affirmations or some, something from city council that we understand this, these particular portions. What are you looking for from us right now?
What, what I'm looking for is for council to affirm that, um, you are fine with S G R using the, um, the screening process as stipulated in the request for proposal.
And that, and that process is proprietary.
Uh, and to talk about it in great detail is proprietary. However, the way we have it laid out in our response to you, um, definitely addresses it without going into great detail. We're, we're sharing with you that we will be looking at the candidates in, 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 in various ways without telling you how we're going to do it.
Understood, okay. Uh, with, with that said by, by Margie, does anybody feel that we need to go into executive session to get the proprietary information? Or at some point, we're going, when potential candidates are given to us, she's going to be able to explain that triage process in a proprietary fashion?
I wouldn't say, uh, I wouldn't say we go into it just now. But I would say that we waited till she finished the complete presentation. And if there's more proprietary information that we need to know, then I would rather know now than later. Uh, and so that means it's good, we're good. I'm, 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 I am in the opinion that we finish it, uh, to finish it all up. If there's enough that we go into executive session with, then I recommend that.
Yeah, rather than going in and out of executive session, we'll save any questions for executive session and go into that at the end. Okay. Understood. So, uh, city secretary and council members, uh, be prepared for executive session at, when we get done discussing other things with Margie. Okay?
I'm sorry, Margie. I had the blue highlighted part, but what was the yellow highlighted part?
The yellow highlighted part, um, it says step three, initial screening and review. That's our response to the request for proposal as it relates to screening.
John, Ed, it's, it's this particular attachment that was sent out by Chelsea. It's one of the PDF attachments, uh, that Chelsea sent to us.
It's not Exhibit A?
No.
No.
No, it's, uh, Exhibit D, tab C, item three, PDF, is the title of the attachment. Exhibit D, tab C, item three, dot PDF.
And she sent it on Thurs- okay. Sure, okay.
I maybe, I guess I maybe, I don't know. I mean, I'm slow or something because I just don't understand. I don't understand what we're, what we're doing. Or we're at, what you're asking us for. So I'm sorry.
Okay, I can, I can say that.
I've read everything. I don't know what, what are we? And what are you, are we, what are we asking? Are we approving the brochure tonight? Are we doing, what are we doing?
Got into the brochure. So if I can.
I don't understand what these other things are, though. What, what, what are we doing right now, then? I don't.
S G R is looking for an understanding of an affirmation. Um, and quite honestly, um, Monty, uh, what I, you know, Margie, we've, we've agreed to the proposal. We've signed, we've signed the contract. I don't know why S G R needs another secondary affirmation of items that we've already seen.
That's, that's my point. That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
And I don't know what you need. You need a, a thumbs up from us, or I don't know exactly what you're looking for from us.
What, what I'm looking for, Mayor, is in your, um, scope of services, the city's expectation, that part, that part that's highlighted in blue. That last sentence on number two says, the extent of screening to be conducted will be determined by the city. Okay, you, you're basically saying that's your expectation that you're gonna make that decision. What we're trying to say is that we believe that we answered that part where you're saying that you get to decide. We're saying that we responded to that in the yellow highlighted section, and we need you to say, we agree. That's all we're looking for. It's for you to say, we agree with you.
You know, what's interesting is that y'all wrote that second sentence and then you're giving us the answer to say you, we agree with the question to in the first place.
We gave you.
We signed, you wrote this, we didn't. And so you're, and you're asking us now, you're saying to help us to understand that that second sentence is determined by the city. And so you sent us this, an answer to that particular question, and it's also a document that we've already seen. So.
We just need you to say that this is okay. The process that we plan to follow is okay with the city. That's all we need.
The process that S G The process that SGR plans to follow is okay. Does everybody agree with that?
As long as we have an understanding that any information that SGR sends to the mayor and council goes to all of us.
That's a follow-on. That's the next, that's another point in the agenda, Jonathan.
Well, that's part of the process.
Besides agreeing with Jeanette there, frankly, I'm Larry now of what, why we're having, why we're having to restate this. It's already been stated. I, I don't know. I'm just, this just doesn't, I mean, I, I'll leave it up to you, Mayor, whatever.
Well, I can say, you know, Margie, y'all wrote this stuff and you wrote the sentence that you want an answer to, and you wrote the answer to it. Now you're asking for us to affirm that the answer you wrote to your own question is what we agreed to.
All I am doing, Mayor, is trying to get confirmation from SGR to make sure that we will not have, we will not encounter any concerns down the road if this becomes an issue. That we're all in agreement that SGR is following the process as you see fit. As it relates to screening.
Okay, so the process in Exhibit D, Tab C, Item Three, we're going to agree that you're going to manage the applications properly, that you're going to do an evaluation and triage of the resumes, and then you're going to then brief us as the selection committee on those candidates.
That's all part of the process.
And all I did was paraphrase what you just highlighted in yellow.
That's, that's right.
City Council, can you agree to that? And knowing that we're going to get details on the proprietary triage process when we go into executive session? Margie?
We can move on?
I hope.
Okay, because I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine if you are. So the next item, can I move to the second item?
Yes, this is, and Jeanette, Jeanette, this is, this is your point here, point of contact. So go ahead, Margie.
Okay, so let me explain the point of contact, how, how we got to probably where we are now. So once it was determined that the, the city was going to secure SGR as, to conduct a search, what normally happens is an email is submitted to the city. In this case, an email was submitted to the, your former city manager from Jennifer Fatten. And it's the basic information about thanking you for, for hiring us and, and telling you some of the things that we need in order to move forward in the process. So once your former city manager received the, the email, he reached out to Jennifer and then when he couldn't get Jennifer, he reached out to me because my name and number was there. And he wanted to know from me what, what was the process. And I indicated that we needed a point of contact. And he asked, "Well, who, who do you suggest?" I recommended the mayor because it is not out of the ordinary for cities, especially when you're hiring a city manager, to consider a member of the council. And generally, it's the, it's the mayor that is the point of contact. Meaning that anytime I need something, I make contact with, with the mayor. And if there's anything that's needed to go to the council, it all goes through the mayor. But I write it all off, send it to the mayor to have him send it to the rest of the council. After sharing that information with the former city manager, he indicated that he would follow up with the mayor. I made the assumption that everything was good as it relates to the point of contact. So I started communicating with the mayor regarding issues. For it to be on the agenda tonight, that means that there must be an issue. So I don't, I've shared with you how we got to the point of, of, of the mayor being the point of contact. It's because I recommended that the mayor be the point of contact and still recommend that the mayor be the point of contact. So that's all I get to share, Mayor.
Excuse me, but you also sent it to a former, former city manager who decided to send it to the mayor. And we have two things. We have a charter that all seven of us hire or fire. And we also have a, a procedure, rules and regulations. And it says we all receive the same information at the same time, period. And I, in the past, have hired two city managers with SGR. And we've never done it this way. All the council received the information at the same time. And for me, I, I don't understand what the problem would be to hit, instead of one email, seven emails to the mayor and the council. And we all received the information at the same time. And as you saw, not everybody answered anyway. So you don't always need an answer. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. But maybe we need to, from the information you've sent, get together and discuss what you've sent.
I need to, I need to interrupt for a moment. I'm showing that I'm having an unstable internet connection. And Jeanette, you and my, so I need to leave and, and log in through a different internet in my house and a different Wi-Fi connection in my house and get a more stable connection. So I really apologize for this, but I don't want to miss what y'all are saying.
Mayor, why, why don't you, why don't you recess the meeting until you can get back on?
That's what I was going to do.
Thank you.
Okay, so timestamp. What do we got?
Six thirty-eight.
Six thirty-eight. We're going, we're going to recess. I'm going to leave and, and come on back, folks. I'm sorry for this, but my connection's going bad. Okay, I am back on a different Wi-Fi connection. Can everybody hear me? Okay, we are going, we're reconvening at six forty, City Secretary. Okay. So, Jeanette?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So you want to continue, please?
No, my point is that we should all receive the information at the same time. And then from there, if someone has a comment or if we need to get together and meet, then we can do that. But that's kind of, we hired SGR to communicate with us. And so the onus is on you, SGR, Rose, to contact all seven of us. And I, I don't think that would be difficult. If you can hit one email, you can hit seven. Now, when, when we, in the past, hired other city managers, we were not in COVID-19, so we could have a meeting. But other than that, other than hitting the email, you know, I, I realize that we're going to talk about the brochure in the future, but I don't like it at all. So I, I think it would have helped if we had all received it.
Okay, your, your point has merit and I don't have a problem not being a point of contact. If you all want, you know, want Margie to pump it all out to seven of us at the same, in addition to the City Secretary. Need, we need Kristen just to be able to help minister everything that we're doing as everything goes along. In, in terms of what's normal for SGR and what you all would prefer, that we get it from Margie all at one time, I don't have a problem with that.
I think, I think Kristen is fine for everyone. I did notice, Margie, on the contract, you also mentioned the HR director. But I think Kristen will probably be just as fine as HR director. But in your contract, you said, you said HR director. But I think Kristen is, is a good center of contact for us. So I would agree.
Okay, so if, if y'all are agreed, can you just give me a thumbs up? Now, Joe, I guess you're still driving. Okay, so.
Yes, sir, but I'm good with it.
All right, so, Margie, just in terms informally, when you send anything, it's going to go to all seven of us at the same time with a CC to Kristen, okay?
And I will copy Kristen. Correct. Okay, so now that we know that all of you are the point of contact, you need to be aware that every Friday, I, I will be sending you a status report of what's going on. Anything that's going on regarding the search, you will all get something on, on, every Friday. And if there's anything else that's needed, all of you will receive it. So I think we're ready to move on, right?
Well, just one word of caution to all of us. Any response that we send back to Margie, we can't do reply all.
Right, no.
It's going to have to go back individually. Otherwise, we create the problem of the walking quorum.
That is correct.
What Margie can do with, you know, and if you send anything to Margie, please CC Kristen. So things can be, can be kept in order. So we just have to be careful in how we communicate to keep everything legal. So we're good?
And if I, oh, I'm sorry. If I have any concerns, let's just say if I'm asking a question regarding something and you respond back to me, if I do not receive any responses, I will more than likely reach out to Kristen to see if she may have received something I didn't. But we'll make it work.
Fine, okay, very good. Okay.
Okay.
Then, Margie, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
That's sensitive that it has a deadline. Would you just include that in there as well?
Yes, I will.
Reply by, and we'll know that for sure as well.
And I'll, I'll make sure there's a reply date. And if I can make a recommendation, you'll always see that too. Okay?
Now, you're not going to require any more affirmations from us, right?
I can't guarantee that, absolutely, Mayor. Okay, so the next item is the timeline of events. When you received our response from SGR, we provided a timeline of events, but it did not have any dates. So let me kind of explain to you what happens. Once we launch the position, the coordinator that works with me will generate a timeline. And that timeline will have the date we launched, the date that it ends. And then it will have a series of all of, a lot of other different dates. We can't provide that timeline till after we launch the position to make sure we get some real good dates. But just to give you some idea of some of the things that's going to show up, and once I get that timeline, I will send it to all of you. You will all get to be able to see all of the dates. And it'll have things like the date that I would need to come meet with you to talk about all of the applicants. It'll talk about the searches. If there's a, there's a questionnaire, the, the individuals would need to, the semifinalists would need to fill out. It'll have a date for that. It's, it's probably about 20 or so different dates that's going to show up on this timeline. But I can't provide one, two you until we launch the position. Okay? That's all I really have to say on that. Are there any questions?
I don't think, any questions? Nope, okay, all right.
The next one is the brochure. You should all have a copy of.
Can, can we do the last one? Can we do advertisements? Because that'll be shorter and then we can go to the brochure.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, so, under the advertisement, you should have received information regarding the advertisement. And this is, this is what we basically sent out to let you be aware of where you can actually post the position. But as I stipulated in the information to you, as part of your not-to-exceed price, you have the ability to select a national as well as a state and municipal association. And I, it's pretty much listed in that advertisement. And as you can see, I also recommend that anywhere where there's zero, we should advertise in those areas. And I, this information is needed at the time we're ready to launch the position. So that I'll know exactly where to post the position. And what's also listed there is you have a separate attachment that's pretty much, it's, it's listed there to be able to share with you the snapshot of where people were advertised, where, where candidates were going to get information about the position. You have a separate sheet there. And I believe that I call that, I'm looking to see what I actually call that. Do, do, do you have a separate sheet? Did you receive a separate sheet other than the advertisement sheet?
You're talking this one here?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, that sheet basically shares with you a snapshot back in January of 2019 of where candidates were going to see various positions. And as you can see, we are recommending, SGR is recommending that you go with nationally ICMA and the State Municipal Association, Oklahoma Municipal League, and anywhere where there's a zero amount that you post there.
Okay, Margie, I had a question on this because we were talking about in the not-to-exceed price.
Right.
The all-inclusive maximum price covers one placement of a national association. So that would be $450 next to ICMA. We don't pay for it because we've already kind of paid for that in the overall contract, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And if we go with the NLC, the National League of Cities, for $250, that's, would that be included in the not-to-exceed price or we still pay for that $250?
You will have to pay a separate $250 because that, you can only select one.
Okay, and the Oklahoma Municipal League, the OML, for $10, that's already included in what we paid for, if I understand that correctly.
The not-to-exceed, that is correct.
Okay, so council, what we have before us is a decision to make in terms of any options we want to exercise in paying for any additional outreach sources that is listed here by SGR. So the only ones that could be considered is the NFBPA. That's the National Forum of Black Public.
Administrators.
Administrators. Now, it was interesting when I looked at the, at the data you sent. Explain that three next to the NFBPA on that data. What, what does that mean?
Only three people at that particular time saw the advertisement there. Only three candidates out of the 628 looked there.
Okay, so you do not recommend that we use the NFBPA?
No.
Okay. So, City Council, do you have any other thoughts looking down there in terms of what could be paid for? The American Public Works Association Texas chapter is an extra hundred. The careers to government is 275. And governmentjobs.com is an extra 175. Do you have any recommendations or any thoughts that you would want to pay extra for? Or are we good with simply ICMA and the OML and everything else that is zero cost?
I think we ought to consider National League of Cities. Because I don't know that every city manager, well, no, let me back up. If it was, and I saw some of your prerequisites that you had on there, that they had been a city manager for five years. And I know in the past, we have interviewed people that were assistant city managers. And I don't know that everybody would be a member of the ICMA. And I don't know that, and that might be in your tier process, that if it was. that, uh, if it was, uh, a good candidate that, um, was not a member and maybe was an assistant city manager.
So Jeanette is recommending NLC, any other comments on that? Mark, you're nodding?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree.
You with that?
I agree.
I was looking for the one that she's mentioned, that she said there was a, uh, national, uh, one for minority or black.
National Forum of Black Public Administrators, yes.
That's the NFBPA.
Okay, and I don't, I don't, I'm not looking at the note, is it saying yes for that or no?
Yes.
That's more than NLC, and it, she said only three people saw it.
Oh, three people, okay.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, that your normal response, uh, on three, when you have other cities?
I'm sorry?
Is that normally the response you get, even when you, uh, do this for other cities, such as your last few cities that you did this for? Is that a normal response?
You mean to?
I've only three.
Well, see, this was a, this was a snapshot that was taken back last year. Uh, at the time, we had various positions open. Uh, I don't know what it would look like if there's another, a snapshot that would have been taken later last year or even now, I don't know what that snapshot would be.
So my, my question is, your last three cities that you completed a search for for city manager.
Yes.
These cities, did they include that organization?
No, they did not.
Okay.
They did not.
All right, thank you.
So I think we have agreement, uh, to go ahead and include the, the NLC. Uh, that would be for two hundred and fifty dollars, in terms of what I'm seeing. Monte, I really didn't get a, a thumbs up or a, a nod from you on the two fifty, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, Joe, are you there, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir, I'm good with it, I just got home, I'll be on video here shortly.
Very good, okay, okay, so, question now, Margie, in terms of process, we're going to be amending the contract to add the, the NLC for two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, Kristen, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, so this is, this is new territory for me, I'm trying to, to mentally work through the mechanics of how we add two hundred and fifty dollars to the contract based on our discussion with city council tonight.
They'll bill us, right, it will be invoiced separately.
Okay, all right, so.
It will not tie to the contract.
Okay, so you're gonna send us a bill for the two fifty?
That is correct.
All right, good enough, all right, good enough, okay. All right, okay, so now, we can go to the brochure.
Okay, can I, can I, before we go there, Mayor, can I just kind of make sure that we're all on the same page? So you agree with ICMA?
Yes.
You agree with, oh, uh, Oklahoma Municipal League, and we're gonna also add the National League of Cities for a separate fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, and anywhere where there's zero, we're gonna advertise in those areas too.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, you're muted, go ahead, Mark.
Question, so, wh- why are we doing Oklahoma?
They're free.
Oh, okay.
They're free.
It's ten dollars.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, almost free.
Yep, almost.
All right, thank you, I didn't have a seat in front of me, because I like Oklahoma. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I understand it's a foreign country, but you know.
Oklahoma.
Okay, so, um, are we ready?
We are ready for a brochure.
Ready.
Okay, so you should have a copy of the brochure. And I guess at this point, Mayor, I, I need to hear the comments from the council as it relates to the brochure.
Yeah, what I, what I intended to do on this one was just to go around the table.
Okay, good deal.
Read, and then see if we have any comments, uh, I did, uh, talk to Congress, uh, Councilmember Harvey, and, uh, about if he had any inputs, he, he did not. Uh, so Jeanette, I'm gonna go to you, because I know you had some, some concerns, so why don't we, why don't we start with you? So give us, uh, the page number, uh, that you'd wanna discuss, and, uh, we can work it from there.
Okay, tell me again where it is on the email, so I can call it up, because I wrote notes. See, this is bad, because we should have had it printed.
Well, we all, I printed.
I mean, I've gone through it, and I wrote notes, but I would like to have it.
Well, I've printed my copy off, I've got mine.
Well, that's good, but I don't have a printer here at the lake, thank you. And that should be something that was provided to us by the city.
Um, I can start out and just say, without having, did you just send it to me, Kristen? Kristen, are you there?
It was in Chelsea Cooper, seven July.
I am, I took, removed the other attachments, and I just sent it to you.
Send to me as well.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I wrote my notes, but I've got my notes here, so, but let, let me just start out with, uh, first of all, three things that absolutely, in my opinion, need to be included.
Yes, ma'am.
And one is that, and, and I know you don't, you, you probably don't know this, but Duncanville is a historical city, it's old. Uh, the origin of, the, the origination of Duncanville can be traced back to eighteen forty. It's, um, forty years later with the construction of the Chicago, Texas, Mexican Central Railroad, connected Dallas to Cleveland, and, uh, Duncanville became, uh, a town, and, uh, then we connected to Dallas, but the, it was the railway that really got us going, but we're old, unlike some of the cities in the Dallas area that were farmland and just popped up, we're old, and we've been here for a long time. These are things, I just wanna give a feeling and a flavor, and I didn't get it from the brochure. The other thing is, we're a tree city, we are designated tree city, and that was nowhere in there. And, uh, we've been designated tree city for nineteen years. The Tree City USA is our day foundation program in cooperation with US Forest Service, I mean, you probably have all the background on that, but we need to hit on that, it's, and it's something that the citizens here are very proud of. Um, that we maintain our trees, we have an ordinance that you cannot take down a tree without replacing it and so on, and you probably know about that, but it's a big deal, in fact, we, uh, that's played out, because the one thing we are is gorgeous, we have, uh, Ten Mile Creek that runs through our city, and we have, when I came here from North Dallas, the one thing that stunned me was the beauty, and that's what people think when they come here, or, is the, the creeks and the trees, and how, how lovely. And the other thing is that, uh, uh, when you were talking about some of the things in the area, this can come, uh, later, but, uh, the Boy Scout encampment is right next to us. And so, I mean, it's right next to my district, and because, um, I mean, it's a big deal too. A lot of people come here, funny thing, when my daughter went to SMU in freshman year, they have, uh, orientation, and they put them on a bus and take them somewhere, and she laughed, because I took her right back home, you know, where it's, where, to everybody else, it's like going out of town, because they never knew about Duncanville, or, you know, the Boy Scout encampment, or, but, but I guess it's the feeling that, um, because we're selling our city to someone to come and live here and, and be with us and be one of us. And so, that was the feeling that I wanted to have in the brochure. Look how beautiful, how drop-dead beautiful this city is, and you would wanna come here and be with us and, and, and be a part of this. Um, and going through it, and I don't have the brochure off, but, um, I've got here in my notes, when you were giving the description of Duncanville, and I believe it was in the first paragraph, and you said it was between I twenty and Highway sixty-seven? You've cut off, you've cut off my whole district. My district goes north of I twenty to Redbird Lane. And so, we've gotta figure out how to say that, that it includes I twenty and sixty-seven. Because my district is everything, uh, from Camp Wisdom North, which is, uh, the preponderance is, uh, north of I twenty.
Okay.
And, uh, I have three distinct neighborhoods, beautiful.
And I'd like to kind of piggyback on that a little bit, it also cuts off District Four, because they're, they applied on, on sixty-seven as well. Um, so, so, uh, Ms. Jameson, I agree with her in terms of we needed to be inclusive of, of our city.
Okay.
Jeanette, come, please continue, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, um, and, and then I saw where you put, or whoever, uh, Redbird Mall. Redbird Mall is not exactly conducive to the area, it has good and bad connotations, and you've got Hillside Village, which is totally in Cedar Hill, and uh, you know, when you, when you bargain contracts, or you talk to someone, if you don't have something, you don't mention it. And, uh, if, I wouldn't mention Redbird or a mall in Cedar Hill. When I read this, some of the things that I felt was, I wanna talk about Duncanville. I don't wanna talk about Cedar Hill, I don't wanna talk about Dallas, I wanna talk about Duncanville, because that's where we want them to come, now, when they come here, when they're hired, you wanna see Cedar Hill, go ahead, and we are part of the best southwest, but I just think it should be dead-on centered on Duncanville, because it is a beautiful, good place to live without, uh, these other things. Now, um, m- mentioning the major teams in the area is not, that, that's not a big deal, because you know, all of them are, uh, within the area, if that's something that you're interested in, and it's not really. But we are, see, they call us the best southwest, yes, but it's always even, uh, you know, I'm AT&amp;T, and we always lump this area too, Cedar Hill, Duncanville, the soda, well, it's not one word. And, and that's the feeling, I don't wanna feel like that, I want to talk about Duncanville, I want it to be focused on Duncanville, and then if, if you're hired and you come here, then you can get in and say, oh, yeah, because you know what, Grand Prairie is right next to us, and we aren't really involved with them on a lot of stuff. Oh, one other thing on the highways, Margie?
Yes, ma'am.
Four oh eight is on, uh, basically on one side of us. But, uh, I, I was thinking about that, because we didn't mention Grand Prairie, and I can tell you, for my district, Grand Prairie's closer.
Okay.
I mean, it just, um, and let's see, oh, and I don't have, I don't have the brochure in front of me, but on something, uh, maybe it was the library and the rec center we had built in two thousand? And we don't need to tell them when it was built, just take that, built in two thousand, take that out.
Okay, oh, you're talking about the library?
See, I'm gonna try to call that back up.
Okay.
Um, because I wrote notes here on it, and see what it says, but I think it was, um.
It's on page three at the very top, it's under, it's under the heading of community on page three at the very top.
Okay, and it says built in two thousand?
I don't see two thousand, oh, yeah, oh, yes, built in two thousand.
That's irrelevant, I don't, I wouldn't put that, it, it's like, yeah, so it's twenty years old.
Okay, I, I.
You don't tell people that, you don't go, look at my great car, it's twenty years old, you just don't say that.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, you were talking, I think, on here, the field house, built in twenty-ten, I would take that out. That could be brand new for all they know. And, uh, uh, the other thing I've got here in my notes was, um, that, uh, you've got on here about the PIT, Public Improvement District. We haven't voted on that, in fact, we even haven't, we haven't even had a discussion on it, and I don't know that, uh, I would even vote for that.
We don't have, we don't have a PIT, and it's not on any agenda to have a PIT either.
So it's on the brochure.
That's, that's not really, that's not, that's, that's part of what we already have, but we'll talk about it later.
We've got a TIF, but we don't have a PIT.
No, we don't.
We really do, but okay, go ahead.
No, that's a very, a very specific program that you have to have, and we don't have it.
We do, but okay.
Okay, what else, Jeanette?
Um, I found on it, I just wanna have, uh, to share with Margie, I just want it to be, oh, it's the photos, the photos. And, and Kristen has been, been going through and, and pulling some and sending them to us, and she sent some more, I think, that are even better, but it, it goes along with what I was saying in that, uh, Duncanville's beautiful, and rather than hard hats, and I looked at it, and I thought, it looks like we're a mining town or something, uh, construction, I, and I talked to Kevin about it, and he said, he said, well, we just have projects going, everybody knows what a project looks like, everybody knows what, what, uh, heavy equipment looks like, we know what a hammer and a nail and a hard hat, what we wanna see, if, if I'm looking at you, I wanna see what your city looks like, I wanna see, do I wanna live there? And the, the one thing we have, and we didn't buy it, and we didn't build it, we have nature, we have the most beautiful place to live, and, and that to me is what we need to, because we are selling that person on living in our community in this drop-dead, beautiful oasis that God created. And, and no city can just come up with Ten Mile Creek or all these trees, and we have, you, you did see in some of the photos, we have a real, uh, active, um, uh, arboretum, uh, department, um, horticulture, and so we have, all, we always have plenty of flowers and color, and it's just beautiful. And to me, that's what I wanna feel and portray on selling someone on our city, is look at this, look at this, look at this, uh, beautiful lake, look at these springs. And, and that was, that was my thing, when I looked at it, I thought, that doesn't feel like Duncanville at all. Okay. Okay. May, may I ask, um, councilwoman, the information you have, all of the information we have, we ended up getting from the city, so this historical information and about the trees and the Boy Scout, is, does someone have this information somewhere that I can get?
Um, well, I know that you can Google it, and it comes up immediately, the history of Duncanville, because it's old, and there's been books written, there's a book in our library. Um, we used to have Historical Society, and they kept, uh, we have, uh, the other thing we have, Margie, is we have family, like, like, um, pioneer families who still live here, the streets are named after, um, and you know, of course, it's a breed that's dying off, but we have people that you can literally go and sit in their living room, and they'll say, tell you, like, about the wells that they went to get their water from is now sitting where Duncanville High School is, it was on the corner, and they went there to get their drinking water. So, I mean, it's old, and, uh,
I think, uh, Jeanette, I think, um, I've seen that book that you're talking about, and I know that there's, it's sitting in City Hall. Uh, I can put my hands on it, we can scan the pages you're talking about in terms of the city's history, and we can email that to, uh, to Margie for, for her, uh, review and inclusion, we can do that.
And I didn't mean to, like, put, you know, just tons and tons and tons of it, but a few sentences, because, you know, if you look at a city like Frisco, Frisco was farmland, and then, whoop, it was built. And that is not Duncanville, it is old, and you can shit with some of these people and hear the stories of what it used to be like, it's kind of neat, you know, and, and so, to me, this brochure is letting them into our lives and inviting them into our city to be a part of us, and knowing that we've got an old city. and inviting them into our city to be a part of us, and knowing that we've got an old city, and it's beautiful. And you'd like to live here, probably.
Wilson, Kristen, if you'll send Margie those pictures you sent us, and I'll get ahold of that book and scan the pages and shoot them over, and I'll CC Kristen. Uh, so then Kristen can shoot the rest of the council what's going over to Margie and see, uh, the historical pieces. Okay?
Yeah, I, I, well, like, uh, the Duncan Switch, the name, and the Nance, and, um, another family, they're the ones that, uh, you know, got the railroad to come here, and the old railroad. We have an old railroad station here, Margie.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's, uh, well, I can tell you too, uh, this isn't so much Duncanville, but it's this whole area that used to, Hillcrest was a canal, and people on that side took a barge to get out here before the railroad. Because this, uh, so it's, it's just old, and it's neat.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, what I'm going to do, uh, since Jonette is District Five, we're just going to work backwards in miracle order. Uh, so, District Four. Mark?
Okay, I'm not going to add a, I'm not going to add a whole lot more to this. Uh, honestly, I'm just going to tell you that if this was a brochure that was going out to more than a candidate for a city manager, then I would have a whole lot more to say on this. But since it's just, since it's going to a candidate with city manager, I'm not going to add a whole lot more other than to say that, please don't make this brochure for a city manager such history that not even a city manager would want to live here. We need to talk about, it's great to talk about the past, where we came from. But if I'm a, if I'm a young city manager, or a middle-aged city manager, I'm looking for the bright future ahead of me. And that future ahead of me could be, you know, the bike lanes, we just, we just talked about, the buns we just talked about. So, I'm not talking about, it's, so it's great, that information that's in the book, that we just talked about for history, it's in that book for a reason, because it's history. So, you don't take all of that history and build a brochure of that, that's the, and, and, and want to invite someone here. I think we're trying to move up to the next level. So, I'm not going to, uh, add any more to what you said, unless this was a brochure that we were putting out across the southwest, and I'm hoping that a city manager will look at that, and during the interview process, I'll, that's where I'll get my questions from, regardless of what he read and what he learned. So, that's all I added to this.
Okay, uh, District Three.
Okay, um, so, I think, you know, we should get, is the words shortened down as much as possible. And when I think, and I, I agree with a lot of what Jonette said, um, you know, with the photos, um, but I think about, you know, better photos of the things that are important, and I think about, what's the most important thing in Duncanville? And I think about these things. First of all, it's got an unbelievable location, you know, to the big city and to everywhere else. Secondly, the beauty of those parks and creeks and, you know, those natural beauty that we don't take near as much advantage of as we should in our marketing is very important. And, and one of the places that's really important that we get for free is Cedar Ridge Preserve. I mean, it's part of that connectivity of parks. It's basically our park, but we don't have to keep it up. And then, when you talk about golf courses and all that, golf courses are on going down. I mean, the only golf course we had here that's impartially in, and, and, and I think it'd be a bottom, you know, something on the bottom is Thorn Tree Country Club. The rest of it's not relevant. It's not relevant. In fact, it even doesn't look so good anymore with these, these, you know, cities with big, big country clubs. So, Cedar Ridge Preserve, that, what Mike, what, uh, Mark said about bicycle-friendly and walkable, because we're such a tight city, I would think that a city manager looking at us, if you have a city that's really sprawled out and got lots of infrastructure, that it's got to be hard to keep up and hard to figure out, but Duncanville is a very tight city. It's, it's a very efficient city, and with its bikeability and walkability, that, that vibe, if you will, is, is, um, is something that we should for sure portray. And then, instead of the big businesses, like advertising our Costco and Papa Do's and that, I mean, we're a city really made up of little businesses, and I think we'll be more little businesses in the future because of, because what we've got left is infield. So, I would think as a city manager, somebody that's interested in, you, and you talk about this a little bit in the, in the rebuilding of buildings and things like that, but in the infield, it's called infield, or the missing middle. The missing middle is what we're trying to, to, um, take care of. I think, um, Duncan Switch, you know, where, if you want to talk about history, you know, we have a Duncan Switch Street Market. We have a street market that I think should be expanded, and, and we should, we should talk more about that. I, um, I really think we should, we should, um, make this more simple. These, the photos again should be, some of it's just too what I call white bread. It's just kind of like standard, standard, uh, wording and stuff here. It just doesn't, it just doesn't, uh, mean much to me. But one of the things that we do have is this mixed-use community, and very, very, very good diverse commi-, I mean, we got the perfect diverse community, in my opinion. We have the perfect diversity, and a lot of our places do. We have the perfect of mixed uses. I mean, we have industrial and retail and residential all connected together. Our industrial's right in the middle of town, so it's a very efficient, again, back to an efficient place. I would think that would be very interesting for a city, a city manager. The last thing, uh, that I have is this, the education and experience. I think asking, I think asking for a master's degree of some sort, I mean, I think we're going to get our best candidate, um, is an assistant city manager, somebody young coming up, um, somebody in another department. I mean, I think to have, to say that we want somebody with a master's, I think that's going to eliminate a lot of good people, and what we're going to get is somebody on the lower totem pole, that's not as good, that's got a master's. I mean, there's a lot of people out there that are highly educated, that may not be very good, and that's what we're going to get with that sentence. I think that a master's degree is something we should not require. I don't think we should re, I don't think we should limit the applicants to some high level. I mean, we can always turn them down if we see them, but I think we should leave it open, where we've got this room for an up-and-comer. Somebody up and coming, because that's where, where I think we're, a city like Duncanville's got to get its, get its, um, best, uh, candidate. And the same thing with the experience, you know, I don't think we ought to have, require a city manager experience. I mean, again, we may get an assistant city manager who's really good, and I know of a couple assistant city managers that are like unbelievably good, and, um, they've never had a job as this, as a city manager. And to keep, to take out the stuff about red, you know, baseball teams and all that stuff, and Redbird Mall and that upscale, that thing in Cedar Hill, I'm, I'm with Jonette, stick, stick with Duncanville, and it's very uniqueness. Stick, hold tight with Duncanville. Don't, I mean, all that other stuff, if they're looking in Dallas, they can, they can, I mean, who doesn't know of the Dallas Cowboys, or the, you know, Texas Rangers? I mean, who doesn't know this stuff? I don't think it's necessary to put in here. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Mayor, before we go to the next one, I, I need to ask a few questions based on the comments. Um, uh, the councilman, uh, mentioned about the degree. Are you interested, is the council interested in modifying, uh, the requirements, educational requirements?
I am not. I prefer an individual with a higher education degree, and I disagree with, with Mr. Anderson's comments. I believe a master's degree, um, in some fashion, for what we're asking for is a requirement. That's my opinion.
Mayor, can I respond?
Sure.
To that? I mean, here's what, you, what you're going to get is somebody with a master's degree that's not very good. You're going to, you're really leaving some really fine people that are maybe on their way to getting those kind of degrees. You're leaving them off. You're going to leave off young people, and probably people of color in, in that statement. You're going to have somebody up here that's, that's got this master's degree that's not very good, and can, couldn't get a job in a big city. So, please reconsider that.
That's a generalization, Monte. I just, uh, I have difficulty agreeing with, um, just my business experience, uh, in terms of what we're looking for, and looking at other city managers, uh, you'll find that a master's degree in public administration, or some other field, a related field, is basically the norm. And if somebody is pursuing one, if they want, you know, when a couple, we'll be talking about other things, uh, if somebody's pursuing one, that could come into the evaluation process that Margie's going to be talking to us about, but I, uh, I, I really feel that, uh, a graduate degree would be to our benefit, rather than to our detriment.
The norm gets us where we're at. I was hoping we would go someplace new. Thank you.
Any other inputs on, on this issue of a master's degree?
Um, I would think that when Margie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, when Margie talks to him, um, that she would have a sense of that, like, talking about those tiers that you're talking about, that maybe this person didn't have a master's degree, but, um, if you had some sort of, um, insight that they were, maybe they were working on it, or, or they had some experience that was equal to or greater than, uh, let's just say, Amberton University.
Well, you've hit on a good point, and that's something that's going to come into play when they go through the evaluation of the candidates.
I, I just thought Margie would probably play into that, and if she came back to us and said, "Well, this is, I, was the third tier the, uh, least, and the first was the highest?" Okay, well, if you came to us and said, "Well, this is third tier, but I think they're, they're really good," you know, and, but they don't have a master's degree. You know? And so, that sort of thing, I just thought, maybe leave it to-
But it says a master's degree's required. It doesn't say there's a tier. It's a master's degree required. It's going to eliminate-
I think there, there's going to be some discussion that you'll hear that's going to answer that question for you, when we, when we go into the executive session. We, we can discuss that further.
Okay, Mayor, the other, he had indicated, so at this point, uh, I, I'm not making any changes unless you tell me to. As you, it's the council, tell me to make changes in the education and experience side. I, 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 unless you tell me to change it, I, I don't see change in it.
Well, we can talk about the education in executive session.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Gordon, I think, uh, Councilmember Vera Cruz had a question, or-
Yeah, Joe?
Yes, sir, I, I somewhat agree with Monte. Uh, I think maybe we should prefer a master's degree, but not make it, you know, a total, uh, I can't think of the word, but, uh, anyway, so they may have some related experience, you know, maybe, uh, 25 years in doing this, or something job-related, and I know it says minimum five years' experience, uh, as a city manager or comparable, so it may come into play. So, I, I agree with him, uh, not necessarily demand one, but maybe preferable. That's it, sir. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll hear more about this in executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all of my questions.
All right, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the comment, the, the, when I read this, uh, brochure was, again, kind of, and, and I've heard this from Monte and Jonette, but it was "Location, location, location." And, and the, uh, there, there just needs to be some fine tuning of somehow doing that, because it is right that we cut off part of District Five, we cut off part of District Four. The, the, the one beauty that we have, we have access. I mean, you can get to anywhere, and, and really, five minutes, i- if you're going somewhere around the Metroplex. You know, even when it mentioned the sports teams, it, you know, it says in under an hour, really, it's under 30 minutes, with the exception of going to Frisco for the soccer games. You know, everything else is somewhat local, and so it's actually shorter. We have just a ton of amenities around us. The, uh, so, some, somehow that, that first part really needs to be, that first paragraph just really needs to be kind of reworked some to, to do that. And, and I, I'm, I'm also a believer, if we need to sell Duncanville a little bit more, the, the, the area will come into play, but we need to sell Duncanville. I mean, we have, um, we do have some uniqueness. You know, when I've seen some of the pictures, and, and although not, not everybody agree with it, but, you know, we have a new hotel. We have a Papa's BBQ and a Costco sitting next to each other, that, that they're showing some kind of growth. We have, uh, uh, Main Station, and, and that kind of area that shows certain things. Well, and I think pretty much everything else is, is more or less been kind of said.
Okay, uh, Joe, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, sir, just a couple of things. Um, I agree, you know, uh, with, with changing the brochure somewhat, then, and, uh, when I look at this, I think of a, a couple of things, and that is, if, if we have a, uh, potential candidate with a family, uh, I know that the family's going to look at the pictures. They're going to look and see what they could possibly get into as far as, uh, what Ms. Janet Jameson described, and, and, uh, things like that. But I think the potential candidate is going to be more like what, uh, Councilmember Cook's talked about, and that's the potential of our city, and what they can latch on to as far as help grow in the city, and, uh, and, and be in legacy for it. So, uh, that's just my input, sir. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that makes it my turn. On page two, uh, the second paragraph, uh, we're talking about, uh, "Great location, safe and peaceful neighborhood, and good schools." I've said it, and y'all know it, that the most, probably the most important thing that anybody looks at in relocation, number one, is if they have kids, is the schools. And I don't like the word "good." Uh, good means mediocre. Good means average. Now, our schools are not average. And thanks to Dr. Smith, uh, in the last round of evaluations, they went from a C to a B, to a good, strong B. Uh, that, that doesn't mean ex, that, that word doesn't mean excellent, but it sure doesn't mean mediocre. And I don't know if you all have been aware of it or not, but yesterday, Dr. Smith was awarded Superintendent of the Year for Region 10, for the state of Texas, uh, which is an accolade that it's, it's highly, it's well-deserved, strongly deserved, and his entire staff and entire faculty needs congratulating, which I have done, by the way. I, I have sent that, uh, to him and his staff and, and the Board of Trustees, because it's a great accolade. So, I'm not sure what the best word is here, other than "good," Margie. Uh, excellent is probably a hyperbole, but we need something else to say, that we've got better-than-good schools here.
We'll come up with a better one.
Look on the website. I'm sure they have, I'm sure they have defined how they define the school district. Look on the website.
Okay, thank you.
You can work on that. Um, on page three, bottom right-hand corner, this is a typo, uh, Globe Life Field. There's too many ands right there. If you can take out the and AT&amp;T, because you got and American Airlines Center. Unless you're looking at it for both being in Arlington. If that's the case, that's okay, no big problem there. Page five, page five at the very top. The sentence says, "With this location just off Interstate 20, the future side of a rail transit line connecting Dallas to your Rapid Transit West Portland Station." That, when that is going to occur, is going to be beyond any of our years, I believe. Uh, that's in the 2045 master plan for the commu-, for, for the Metroplex. So, um, I believe that what we need to do is, is not say anything about that, because we don't have any idea what's going to happen. Um, now, what I, what I did say is that modifying it to say, uh, "With this location just off Interstate 20, comma, Main Street at center is prime for redevelopment potential." And so, just taking out that piece there, Margie, it's, remember to say it's coming, it's not.
Okay.
Uh, bottom of the page, next to last paragraph, talking about Highway 67. Last information I got from TechStop is that puppy's not going to be done until sometime in, uh, late fall of 2020. But Kristen, if you would get ahold, please, of, uh, of Mr. Frederickson or Mr. Ramey, and have them make contact with TechStop, let's get an updated timeline on completion of- Highway Sixty Seven. It's definitely not gonna be summer. That, that I know. And Margie, in that last paragraph, uh, these are typos, US Sixty Seven, we don't call it US Sixty Seven, it's Highway Sixty Seven.
Okay.
Um, page six at the very top, the bond project was 21.6 million, not 22.6 million.
21.6?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so, um, that's the, the input I have, uh, in terms of understanding what needs to be worked. I, I agree with what's been said in terms of the strong focus on, this is Duncanville. This is who we are. This is what we are. And this is why you want to come to be our city manager, to understand both our history but to propel us into the future and to take our potential and what we've got. Like Monte was saying, you know, we've got industrial, we've got commercial, we've got residential. Come here and use the three pieces of, of the building stool to take us into the future. Be strong about it. So that's the other inputs that I've got. And if there's any afterthoughts on this particular aspect, I think we can go ahead and recess and go into executive session. Was Margie, do you have any, uh, thoughts before we do that?
Um, just regarding the brochure itself, we will make the, uh, the changes needed, and I'll send it out to everyone and get feedback.
Okay, all right. So, um, at this time, uh, the, we will recess, uh, the city council meeting, the timestamp is seven thirty-five. Uh, Kristen? Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Did, do we have a link to go into executive session?
Yes, sir. I sent it to you. I can forward it again.
Let me see if I can find it. Uh, Agenda with Attachment, Agenda with Attachment. Uh, Citizen Comments, Kristen Down, Citizen Comments, Pictures, Pictures, Kristen Down, Public Comment, Kristen Down, Motion Language. There it is. I got it. Okay. Okay, um, all right. So we're going to, uh, recess. Uh, the timestamp is seven thirty-five. If you all would please log out and log into executive session. All right, uh, we are conre, can re, we are reconvening our city council session, and the timestamp is eight oh four. And moving on to, um, Agenda Item.
Mayor, before you do that, if you would go ahead and read the executive session in case they got missed, uh, before we went into executive session, so the record reflects, uh, the reason for our executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Yes, I will do that. Item number four is the city council may convene into closed executive session under Section 551.071 and 551.074 to seek legal advice from the city attorney or to deliberate a personal matter concerning the hiring assignment or evaluation of an employee to with the city manager. And the city council did go into executive session. Um, we did recess and it's seven thirty-seven, and we're now reconvening city council at eight oh four. And moving on to I, Agenda Item Number Five, uh, there is action to be taken as a result of our executive session, and if our city attorney would please read the, the language for the motion.
Uh, after, uh, meeting with city council this evening and discussing, uh, the matters that are on the agenda, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve a process plan for the selection of the city manager with SGR, which would include the scope of services to re, uh, include the initial screening and review based on SGR's tier system triage for applications. Be that the point of contact shall be all seven city council members with a co, a copy to the city secretary and requiring that all reply date back from SGR be submitted to the council for comment. The timeline shall be the standard timeline that SGR employs after the initial selection of a launch date, subject to any future agreements by and between SGR and the city council. As to the brochure item D, uh, the following items were asked to be accentuated in the brochure, that the, one that the Duncanville's a tree city, uh, that we have a long history stemming from, uh, the eighteen forties to the present, that we need to fully describe it, uh, Districts Four and Five. Mention our Western Highway connection on Highway Four Oh Eight, Clark Road. Eliminate the date of construction of the library and the fieldhouse, that we do not have a PIG, but we have a TIF, uh, that we accentuate pictures showing our natural beauty and photography as well as our family-oriented, uh, community with, uh, youth and other, our parks and other amenities in the city. Uh, we wanted to accentuate Duncan Switch, the rail station, the walkability and bike trails, uh, small and local businesses, as well as our, um, Duncan Switch, uh, street market. Uh, mention our schools are highly rated or comparable, uh, comment, along with strong leadership from our superintendent and our Board of Trustees, uh, for our school system. Uh, update, uh, information from Tech Stop about the completion of Highway Sixty Seven. Uh, also that, uh, Highway Sixty Seven, um, be referred to as Highway Sixty Seven, not State Highway Sixty Seven. And the editorial, uh, comments from the mayor regarding the size of the bond package and accentuate our history and our future as well as our diverse economy and citizenship.
Is there a motion?
Lastly, the advertising, uh, be the standard advertising is provided in the contract with the ICM and the other, um, state and regional inclusions in the contract, as well as the Oklahoma Municipal League and the National League of Cities. And that is all, Mayor, if someone would so moved.
Mayor, I'd like to so moved, to make the motion so moved.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Mr. Vera Cruz has made a second. Uh, city council, please vote. Uh, city secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim McNabb, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Thank you, city council. The motion is approved. Uh, seeing as how it, that it closes our agenda, our city council meeting for the seventh of July, 2020, is hereby adjourned and the timestamp is eight ten. City council, thank you very much. We appreciate you.